Called me in order for the January 11th, 2022 meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Thank you. Welcome back, everyone. Now is time for public comments on agenda and non-agenda items.
Mayor Muldoon and members of the council. As you may remember from last year, my name is Jim Mosher. And as a non-agenda comment, I would like to suggest, in the current situation where we believe that a very significant portion of the Orange County population is infected with COVID-19, that you seriously consider reinstating the remote call-in option for your public meetings, so that those who may be at home and feel uncomfortable coming here have the opportunity that they should by right have to speak to you. And not only that, but those who feel a compulsion to come here, like me, don't bring you our germs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Laura Curran. I live in Corona del Mar. Happy New Year. So I would like to talk about this item related to drug and alcohol rehabs and the need for the city to add qualified experienced council. We've added a planner, Matt Schneider, who's worked in San Juan Capistrano on this issue, but we clearly need experienced council as well. And let me give an example. In 2020 and 2021, I met with our staff and asked them to file a complaint about a possible integral facility at Miramar Recovery located at 435 Dalia and 435 and a half Dalia in Corona del Mar. This facility was also identified as integral in 2014, but through some backroom machinations, regained its six-and-under licenses. So after multiple communications, the basic feedback I got was that there was no evidence and no information at hand, and I haven't received any integral, any information that the city was having confirmation of the integral operation through PRA. However, at Thanksgiving, so this is what I did at Thanksgiving, I received a copy of a public notice of violation from an inspection report on March of 2020. This was filed late in 2020, if you do the redaction math. It showed Miramar Recovery was operating as an integral facility. The evidence was there was one person supervising 12 people at a six-person licensed facilities. The evidence was people were attending their treatment program meetings in one house and not using as 12 people versus the six people groups which are called for. Additional evidence is people were traveling and sleeping in the same buildings. Further, there was lack of supervision. There were over 100 bed checks that were missed in a facility that people send their children to where there is supposed to be a bed check every 30 minutes to verify that there are no issues with drug or alcohol, and this is the measurement for supervision. Over 100 were missed. Finally, there was overcrowding. There were nine people living in one of the facilities and six in the other. So these are serious violations, which the DHCS only presented to me this year after multiple public records request, but that through the lack of resources or the lack of filing complaints, formal complaints, we also did not have this information. And as residents, we've asked repeatedly for the city to pursue distancing requirements and the integral facility status of Miramar and to take these complaints forward and not rely on the residents to do this. So I think it's only fair to our staff for these complex issues, especially as mental health facilities are coming on board, that are doing dual diagnosis and joint operation with six-and-under license and unlicensed, that we add more qualified experienced staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Harp, do you have a closed session announcement?
Thank you very much. The city council will adjourn to closed session to meet with the city's labor negotiators regarding negotiations with the Part-Time Employees Association, the Association of Newport Beach Ocean Lifeguards, and the city manager. They will also be meeting with legal counsel regarding two litigation matters entitled City Newport Beach versus Cooley, LLP, and William O'Connor, and Jet Suite X versus County of Orange. All of that set forth on the agenda under item number 3A through C. I will note that the mayor will be recusing himself from item 3B1, which is the Cooley matter, based on potential business interests in the future, and the city manager will be recusing herself from item 3C, based on personal financial interests. Thank you.
Thank you. We are recessed until the 5:00 regular meeting. Called me in order for the January 11th, 2022 regular city council meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Thank you. Mr. Harp, is there a closed session report?
There is. First of all, I have a correction to make regarding agenda items number 3B1 and B2. Prior to the meeting, I announced that Mayor Muldoon had a conflict regarding agenda item number 3B1. Mayor Muldoon also had the same conflict regarding agenda item number 3B2 that I forgot to mention, and he did recuse himself from both matters. And then regarding agenda item number 3B2, a motion was made by Mayor Potem Blom and seconded by Councilmember Dixon to continue to support the County of Orange in this litigation, including providing amica support if needed, and to monitor litigation, ensure the city's interests are protected, but not file a motion to intervene at this time. All council members voted in favor of the motion, except for Mayor Muldoon, who I had known had recused himself.
Thank you. Now is the time for invocation by Father, excuse me, the invocation by Father Steve Shalat of Our Lady Queen of Angels Church. Father Steve.
Mayor and members of the council and fellow community members, I received a little message from the Lord this afternoon, and he said, "Remember, Father, the council is very, very busy, so keep the prayer short." So I promised to do that. Let us gather ourselves and ask the grace of Almighty God to be with us tonight. Lord, we are a people of many concerns, issues, and needs. We pray that the gift of this council is that it is truly a place where we can listen, we can learn, and make good recommendations and decisions to strengthen and aliven our communities. This is a place, Lord, where we engage the common good. And so we ask you this evening, Lord, to allow our hearts and our minds to be open to profound listening, to do our best to care for and respond to the various needs of those we live with and serve. May we be COVID careful, and we ask your blessing and strength to heal quickly all those who have COVID. And finally, Lord, keep us attentive, keep us humble, and keep us all in your care. Amen.
Thank you, Father.
Please place your hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman O'Neil. We were going to recognize the freeway fighters, one of whom is a very important man to Duffy here on the dais, but we had to continue it for safety's sake. So that'll be continued, I'm guessing indefinitely? Okay, we're shooting for March. That's great. Okay, so as my first official business as mayor, I'm going to recuse myself. This item's going to move forward. I have a potential business conflict on this item due to a company I'm involved with that could do telecommunications work but does not at the time, so Mayor Potem Blom, it's all you.
Thank you, Mayor Muldoon. All right, so this is a public hearing for the proposed assessment district number 120-2, area along Santa Ana Avenue, Cliff Drive, La Jolla Lane, and La Jolla Drive. This is the time and place. You want me to run through that? This is the time and place fixed for the public hearing on protests or objections to the formation of assessment district number 120-2, the area along San Ana Avenue, Cliff Drive, La Jolla Lane, and La Jolla Drive. All ballots regarding assessment district number 120-2 must be received by the city clerk prior to the closing of the public hearing. Counsel, would you like a staff report? No, we don't need a staff report. Do we have any questions up here? No? What is that? Well, then I guess we're going to turn this over to the public for comments? Perfect. Any public comments on this item? Seeing none?
Yeah, just to confirm, if there are any, if anyone's here that has a ballot, you need to come up and give it to us at this time before we close the public hearing. Does anyone have a ballot?
And anyone wishing to view the counting of the ballots can be, go to the community room, and the individuals counting those ballots have been deputized to do so.
Yeah, and the public hearing is now closed.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, notice to the public.
The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Thank you. Now is time for council announcements and/or reports from council members on committee activities, along with any council member's request for an A1 item to be placed on the future agenda. Councilman O'Neil, do you have announcements or reports?
Just a couple. I was able to spend time with my family at the Patrick's Purpose Walk, which was well attended by a lot of people in our community. I continue to appreciate Patrick's family for everything that they're doing to bring light to teen mental health and promoting inclusive communities, so thank you to them. It was also, like, a lot of people enjoyed the Christmas Boat Parade, so thank you to all the people who participated and organized. And then this week, we have a board meeting, our first of the year, for the transportation corridor agencies. Again, just a reminder to the public that the Newport, City of Newport Beach has a board seat on the San Joaquin Board of the TCA. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy New Year to everyone. Not many additional external meetings or ancillary meetings. We did have an aviation committee meeting on December 20th. Our next aviation committee meeting is January 24th, and look forward to kicking off the new year with an update on our accomplishments last year and then our goals and program of action for 2022. I am a member of SCAG Southern California Association of Governments Regional Council, which is representing LA, Orange, San Bernardino, Riverside Counties. And last week, last Thursday, I think it was a seven-hour Zoom call. We did get a half an hour lunch break. And an important action by the committee that I'm very pleased because the City of Newport Beach supports the action that was taken, and the Southern California Association of Governments, its regional planning organization, voted to support a ballot initiative that aims to override state housing laws by giving local governments the final say over land use decisions, and Newport Beach City Council endorsed this proposed initiative. It's being circulated now. And Yorba Linda City Councilmember Peggy Wong is one of the initiative's main proponents, and she told her fellow SCAG council members, regional council members, that we do not want to allow Sacramento to tell us what's best from 500 miles away. So this is in direct opposition to the new laws SB 9, 10, and 11 that were recently enacted as of January 1st. And so this is an important initiative that's being circulated, so if you're asked, well, I guess I can't advocate for that. Thank you. But anyway, so, yeah, the City of Newport Beach City Council supports this initiative if you were to be asked. So I'm pleased that I was able to support the recommendation to SCAG to support this initiative. I think that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Seven hours is impressive. Councilmember Brenner.
I attended the Wake Up Newport meeting with the new superintendent of Newport Mesa Unified School District speaking, and it was very impressive, and I sent notice to a lot of my younger friends who have kids in the school district, but 8:00 in the morning is a really bad time for people with kids that are getting them to school. So Will and I were in the Newport Mesa Unified School District quarterly meeting that we have with members of our staff and members of their staff just yesterday or the day before. And I expressed to him how impactful I thought his presentation was, and he said that they, one of the goals of the board is to make sure that he gets out more to connect with the members of the community and the parents, and that he is available for them, because I really think that over the COVID situation, a lot of them, you know, lost some confidence, and so I think he's a wonderful addition to the Newport Mesa staff, and we're going to be really happy with that. I also met, I have a slide, I believe, that is somewhere, when that comes up. There we go. I met and took donuts to the trellis teams who worked with, on PCH during the holidays, cleaning up Pacific Coast Highway in Corona del Mar. And this is a team of formerly homeless people that are in our shelter, but trellis, it has this great program that we've been talking about periodically here and that we're supporting, where they take and make teams from people who live there, take them out into the community to do projects for us or for companies or for other organizations that just need some manual labor. And they were such nice people, and they just really appreciated being there, they appreciated the donuts, and they, they, it was during that really cold spell that we had, and I was freezing that morning. I said, "Oh, my gosh, it's so cold out here," and one of them said to me, "Well, when you live on the street, you kind of get used to it." So, you know, he kind of told me what I was missing. But anyway, let's see, what else did I do? Oh, Jeff Boiles, our fire chief, and I met with Laguna Beach Councilmember George Weiss, and Laguna Beach is going to a city-provided ambulance service, such as we have. They've been making do with a private ambulance service, and the people were not happy with that, so their council voted to move forward with having a different type, the kind of similar to ours, it may be a little bit different. But anyway, Jeff was great in sharing information with him, and also he spoke to their chief and gave him information. Basically, they wanted to know about the financial arrangement and how it works and how happy we are with the arrangement and everything. And so anyway, it was a really interesting for me and helpful for them meeting. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Avery. Thank you, Councilmember, Mayor Potem Blom.
I have none. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Just briefly, I attended the Christmas Boat Parade kickoff with the Grand Marshals, who were U.S. Olympians, and I was joined by Councilwoman Dixon and Councilwoman Brenner, and we all realize out of shape we were. It was inspiring to see our local athletes celebrate Christmas and their victories. Quickly, one more item, just informally, the County of Orange, for those who are interested about COVID tests, will mail you a COVID test if you request one. We're asking that you please do not go to the Hoag ER unless you're in need of medical attention. If you are looking for simply a COVID test, you can seek a private test, or you can seek help with the County of Orange, but Hoag Hospital and other hospitals would rather not see people simply to find out if they have COVID unless they had severe symptoms and are in need of medical attention. Madam Clerk, please read notice regarding public comments on consent calendar.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 17. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion, unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action. I also need to note a recusal for myself on item 7 due to real property interests.
Thank you. Councilmember O'Neil, do you have any items to pull from consent calendar or conflict to announce related items 1 through 17?
No, I just want to note a, the update that was in our packet on item 10, which updated the reference to how much is coming out of the general fund and Water Enterprise Capital Fund. Other than that, no notes. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor. I need to recuse myself on item 17 for business interests.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dixon.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I need to recuse myself on item number 3 due to my residence. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brenner.
No, I think I'm okay.
Thank you. Councilman Avery.
I have none.
Mayor Potem Blom.
Thank you. I need to recuse myself on item number 11 due to real property interests.
Great, and I have a conflict on item number 7 due to potential business interests related to underground and telecommunications. Mayor Potem Blom, do you have a motion?
I do have a motion. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move the balance of the consent calendar with noting the following. Update to item number 10, recusal from Councilmember Duffield for number 17, a recusal for Councilmember Dixon for number 3, a recusal for myself for number 11, and a recusal from Mayor Muldoon for number 7.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second by Councilwoman Dixon. Will now public comments on the consent calendar items 1 through 17. Please come forward.
Mayor Muldoon, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. First, I would like to point out that on the consent calendar, there are three items, number 13, 14, and 15, in which you are being asked either tonight or at your meeting two weeks from now, to authorize the payment of $2,000 one-time cash bonuses to hundreds of city employees. I do not doubt that we have very good and hard-working city employees. I think, though, the public could use more explanation of what is behind paying these bonuses at this time, what the logic of it is, and if the purpose of it is to create a congenial working atmosphere to retain employees, which I think is usually the purpose of bonuses, it would be more in keeping with our state constitution if these were based on future work that we expected from the employees, not past work that they have performed. So at least in my opinion, these should be tied to something like, we will give your promise, the existing employees a bonus, should they still be working with us a year from now, two years from now, something of that sort. The second item I wanted to comment on is this item number 5, which is the creation of a new general plan update steering committee, and I really have to question what this is doing on the consent calendar at all, to be adopted with no discussion of why you are doing this. In the past, when we had general plan update steering committees, the first one in 2000 through 2006 consisted of 11 public members who came from your various boards and commissions. Two years ago, when we started doing this, or I guess three now, it was a group of seven citizens steering the update, and now it's down to just three people who will be chosen by the mayor with no intervention or voice from anybody on the council. Why are we doing that? Why are we doing that with no discussion? On the consent calendar is beyond me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Okay, seeing?
Good evening. My name is Laura Curran. I live in Corona del Mar. I'd like to comment on items number 6 and number 17. First of all, number 6 is the item which calls for future amendments related to the city's residential care facilities. And as I read this, residential care facilities covers quite a few types of facilities, including facilities for the elderly, adult residential care, mental health rehabs, drug and alcohol licensed rehabs. I would ask, as we move forward with this, that we are clear about the types of facilities that particular amendments apply for, because otherwise, all of these types of facilities could ask if this applies to them. Second, we're hopeful that we will have thorough, well-thought-out amendments. It says here, "The city only has land use authority for residential care facilities that serve seven or more occupants. Residential care facilities that serve six or less occupants are permitted by the state, and the city has no land use authority." Well, actually, the city does have land use authority on unlicensed facilities of six-and-under and can make code and enforce related to those. The city can enforce related to integral facilities, which can be two six-and-unders, which are licensed or unlicensed, operating jointly. And we're currently seeing, especially up where we had a shooting last year in San Ana Heights, mental health facilities opening, which offer dual diagnosis for mental health plus drug rehab, and they're operating as integral facilities as well. So this is something that, as we go forward, we need to be very clear on. And finally, we do have the ability to regulate six-and-unders and integral facilities for distancing. This was affirmed on September 8th. The Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals ruled that the City of Costa Mesa's sober living home ordinances are not discriminatory and do not violate the Fair Housing Act, which validates a federal jury decision in December 2018 that upheld the city laws. And in fact, they said that cities' requirements for distancing of several hundred feet between facilities actually improved the residential character of treatment and provided potentially better outcomes. So as you propose moving forward, and we appreciate your effort on these activities, think seriously about strong, vigorous enforcement of these, of the ordinances, and making sure that the people in treatment get quality treatment, that they're not being treated by facilities that are lacking in supervision with unqualified personnel. And finally, taking that approach will respect the time and, the time and energy of the residents who have been talking to you about this issue or other council members for over 14 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
On item number 17, I'd like to follow up on Mr. Mosher's comment. Item G says, "Upon city council adoption of this plan, employees in the executive management group will be, will be part of a new defined contribution plan. The city will contribute a total of 2% of base salary to each 401Ks defined contribution plan, and employees are 100% vested immediately in all contributions made to their 401 account." I've never been 100% vested the day of the contribution, but my question to our staff, to Barbara Savarini, was, is this a net new contribution? Is this a net new pension plan? Or is this replacing a plan for key and executive employees? And I haven't got, we haven't gotten to a complete answer yet. So as you're looking at this, I ask you, if we're giving people 2%, 100% vested the day of, is this replacing their current plan, or is this net, is this an incremental delta to what they're currently getting? And, um, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Okay, seeing none. I have some comments, as does Councilwoman Dixon. Do you want, would you like to go first, Councilwoman? Yeah, just briefly, the one-time cash bonus we're giving to employees because our employees deserved it, they earned it, they worked during a time when many people didn't work, they're essential workers, they cared about the city tremendously, and the residents were able to rely on them in a very trying time. Now, this particular benefit is a non-perceval contribution, and as you know, we have a $30 million surplus, and the federal government has given us funding as well, so we thought that this would be appropriate allocation of some of those funds. 401K and all contributions that are earned, earned, they vest immediately. Tax penalties might be included if they withdraw at the time. Any other item you want to address on that?
The only other issue I'd mention on the labor item is that it only applies to current employees, and anybody who's left the organization wouldn't receive that benefit, so it's not being retro. And the courts have recognized that when people are out of contract... And the courts have recognized that when people are out of contract, that you can basically look at things that are retro, so even if it was retro, it would be appropriate.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. I did not ask this item to be pulled on the consent calendar related to the Harvard Commission 2022 objectives, but I see Mr. Kenny here, and he's got a notebook in front of him. Maybe he's prepared to speak. May I just allow him to give us a quick update on top-line goals for our Harvard Commission? Thank you, Mr. Commissioner Kenny.
And I'll just note for the record that Councilmember Duffy recused himself from this matter and left the room.
Thank you, Mayor Muldoon, Councilmember Dixon. We're just here to answer questions. We annually present to you our goals and objectives for your review. We are, we serve at your leisure, and we want to make sure that we're going in the right direction, and so we ask that you review and approve our objectives. We've accomplished a great deal in the past year, and we have some big issues that we need to face in 2020. So we're hopeful that you have reviewed those and that you'll approve those this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Councilwoman Dixon. Any other comment requests? I see Councilwoman Brenner.
Thank you, Kevin. I just wanted to find out, I think I have to either vote no on sixteen or ask Aaron if we have fully communicated this ordinance to the Citizens Committee that we were working with on this, on the residential care facilities. Is that the right item?
That's number six.
Number six.
So that was just basically opening things up to begin, you know, so this is just initiation. So it's going to be coming back through the planning commission, there's going to be full vetting of it, so there's going to be plenty of opportunities for people to comment.
Perfect. Okay. And then the other one was on the General Plan Update Committee. Have we ever discussed here at council during this new iteration how we feel about the composition of that committee? Have we ever had public input about that?
So tonight would be the time for public input. It sets forth the criteria for being selected for it, but the ultimate confirmation will come back to the City Council for confirmation. So it just lays out the process and kind of what the scope is in the resolution. Tonight would be the opportunity for people to come and comment on that, but it will come back to council again at the time that the people are confirmed.
But by that time, we will have actual people here that are being recommended, so it looks personal, any kind of discussion you have about the qualifications we'd like to see on that committee. Do you feel like, I know we went through this whole process when Mayor O'Neal was mayor, and we did a lot of public input, but we haven't this time, have we?
Well, I think it's really a continuing process. I mean, there's been a lot of input into the general plan, but it was notice on the agenda, and this is just basically the first step of the formation of it, of the committee. It's, it's, it's going to come back, there's going to be a whole lot of process associated with it, but that's what's been done today. I don't know if there's been other meetings with the public on this specific item or not, but I know it was agendized, and this is just kind of the first step in the process for that as well.
So you think that there will be an opportunity for us to talk about it when it's not personality-driven before we get to that point of approving particular people?
The next time it comes back will be to approve specific people.
Does anyone else think that you'd like to talk about this more before we get to that point?
Are you requesting a poll or to continue?
I just like, yeah, I'd like to poll to continue.
Okay. Would you like to amend?
Make a motion that we continue this item to our meeting in two weeks.
Yeah, I second as well, yeah, as is Councilwoman Dixon. So Councilwoman Dixon seconds to continue that item for one more meeting, for Councilwoman Brenner to look into her district more.
So probably best, since it's still on consent, to go ahead and make that as part of Councilmember Pro Tem Blom's motion, and then have it, have it seconded, and then take care of it that way.
So do you accept a friendly amendment?
I accept that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I clarify that then it would come back at the next council meeting as a, like a current business item to have a discussion? Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, so we'll incorporate that in our motion. Thank you. Yes, Councilwoman Dixon.
Well, just to carry on with that, I, refresh my memory, did we approve the three-member, when did we approve the three-member general plan steering committee structure? Did we?
It was recommended by you.
So I think that that's what's being, being proposed to you this evening. You're free to make some additional changes. I'll turn things over to Councilmember O'Neal.
Yeah, so we haven't. The, so Mayor Avery asked Councilmember Brenner and I to sit down and try to figure out the proper structure to move forward, and so Joy and I met with staff a couple times to work this through. The thought process there, where, where we, when we were working this through and trying to work, is basically, it's, it's kind of a two-tier. So you're going to have a three-person steering committee that'll basically be the group that helps be the buffer between us and the much larger group. We don't have, we don't have the structure for the much larger group set up yet. I mean, that could be five people, it could be 25 people, but it's going to be, we'd get a recommendation from, assuming this is where we went at our next meeting, it would be those three people that would make, you know, try to make a recommendation to us on what they think would be really helpful to get all the elements done. And so that was the thought process that, of how it got to where we are right now, is sitting down, Joy and I, we kind of worked it through with staff and made a recommendation of three people on this one, and, you know, with, obviously, as Aaron said, approval by us. So if, if folks want it bigger or smaller, we can work it through, but that was, that's, that's the recommendation that came out of our discussion.
Well, thank you for that explanation. I did talk with staff, because I was trying to remember, did I vote on the three members? So I certainly accept the recommendation of the ad hoc committee. And I'm not objecting to the three member, but I think it would be helpful when we come, when we bring this back, to just lay out the process, just as Mr. O'Neal has described. So it's a, this three-member community steering committee is different from the seven-member that we formed when I was mayor in 2019, where we had seven or eight members up here, seven probably, and so, which was a very effective steering committee. I could see the arguments in favor of a smaller committee, that's fine, but the, the real work, just for the benefit of the community, is understanding of the general plan process. The real work is going to come from the community-based, larger, could be possibly 25 to 29 members.
For sure. Yeah, there's no question.
So that's where the real detail work of the, of all of the elements of the general plan will take place. So the steering committee will move that forward. So I agree it would be helpful to discuss this at the next meeting, just for everybody's edification. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Harp.
I just got to confirm for everybody in the public, so the motion's been modified to continue Agenda Number Five to current business at the next meeting.
Thank you, sir. Let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for item three, ordinance 2022-1, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach, adopting local coastal program amendment, LC 2019-002, to amend title 21 Local Coastal Program Implementation Plan of the City of Newport Beach Municipal Code related to hedge heights in front setbacks of betting stratas in Lidl Isle. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Real quick, Mayor, Agenda Nineteen, they're ready to result, to basically announce the results, so I don't know if you want to handle that now before we move on?
Yeah, I will recuse myself, and then we'll return for public comments on non-agenda items. Excuse me.
And just for the public, so we're reopening Agenda Item Number Nineteen, and they're going to announce the results from the balloting.
Okay, the results are in for Assessment District Number 120-2. Out of the 44 ballots, 30 were returned for a percent return of 68.18%, an assessment amount of $1,797,865.16. For the yes ballots, 25 of those 30 voted yes for a percent of return of 83.33%, an assessment amount of $1,551,520, $525.75. The assessment amount percentage of yeses is 86.30. The vote for no ballots, there are five of those ballots, percent of those returns considered 16.65% of the ones returned. That assessment value is $246,339.41, which is an assessment amount percentage of 13.70. So based on the ballot tabulations, it is appropriate for the City Council, if it is your desire to perceive, with the formation of Assessment District 120-2 by adopting Resolution 2022-5 confirming the assessment. The resolution is a formal action declaring the results of the ballot procedure, ordering the acquisition of the improvements, making determinations, confirming the assessments, and approving the Assessment Engineers' final report.
We have any additional questions up here? Perfect. We have a motion. Diane? Second with Councilmember Avery.
Nineteen B is the action, if you want to move forward with it.
Let's move forward with action nineteen B.
Nineteen B. And the second was?
The second was Councilmember Avery.
Thank you. With, with Mayor Muldoon recusing himself, the motion carries 6-0.
Public comments on non-agenda items, please come forward.
My name's Christopher Sims, and I'm born and raised in Newport Beach. I emailed Councilmember Avery last week about the speed and the noise happening from Superior into Huntington. I live in Newport Shores, and I'm just curious if there's something that could be done about this. I mean, more signs, more police, decibel level meters. I mean, it's unbelievable. I'm woke out of my sleep morning and night because of all the drag racing going on, and as you know, there was a fatality this last summer there, like right there, right before you get to Prospect. So I was just, I don't know if I can get a signed petition by everybody in Newport Shores, I don't know.
It definitely helps to get residents to express their concerns. You can talk to, we should have talked to Grace about that. Grace, would you mind talking for a second on the side? Yep, we actually can't direct police what to do on the City Council dice, but staff can work with them. Thank you.
Can, can you do, is there a decibel meter thing?
She can instruct you as what's available. Thank you.
Yeah, so I can, or have our police chief also touch in with you, so we can talk through a little bit offline, if that's all right. Thank you.
Any other comments on non-agenda items? Seen none? Yes, Councilmember.
I just started to say, do we want an update on, because we've got a lot of police resources going to those loud and racing vehicles, and I don't know if you want John to update us on that or not, because they, over the summer especially, did a lot of work in that area on all of PCH. But anyway, I just wanted you to know that that's continuing to happen, I believe.
We need that to be agendized, correct? Or can he give one?
He can give a short response. We can have a discussion of the items that are on the agenda, but he, Chief, please can provide a brief response.
And anyone else who wants to make a non-agenda notice, please come forward, as our police officer swags his way up here.
Well, first of all, I'd like to encourage the resident who just talked about these loud vehicles to attend the Corona del Mar Residents Association meeting, which is the third Thursday of the month at 7:30. We always have a police officer there. Thank you very much. Since we started that five years ago, the lieutenants have shown up. I would say to every meeting, and Joy, who's our lieutenant right now? Who's the person who?
It's Lieutenant Eric Little.
Little, Lieutenant Eric Little will be there, and he often talks about this issue. It's a Zoom meeting, so we can get you the link. But we also want to thank the police for making sure that they're represented, because it does lead to a lot of productive discussions for the residents and for the police, we hope. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Curran. John Lewis, Police Chief, and thank you, Councilmember Brenner, on behalf of the Police Department. We've done quite a bit when it comes to this type of, this type of enforcement up and down Pacific Coast Highway, and it's something that we've addressed, not just within the city limits, but also from a regional perspective. We had coordinated efforts with all of our partners up and downs, particularly Pacific Coast Highway, from one end of the county to the other, specifically focusing on these types of issues. So there, it's still a work in progress, but there's been a significant amount of police resources that have been devoted to this specifically, whether it's the, the task force types of operations where we're going out and doing directed enforcement, but there's also been a number of educational efforts and work that we've done at the state and regional level as well to try to address this more on a long-term basis. So I'm happy to get this individual's contact information, and we can certainly follow up with him and his issues directly.
And John, you might mention, we have a new traffic commander, Ryan, Ryan Peters?
Sure, it's Lieutenant Ryan Peters, and that's exactly who is going to be reaching out to, to this gentleman here.
Okay. Thank you very much. It is still, still a problem.
It still is. It's, it is, we have seen significant improvement, but it's, it's one that we just can't let up on. We have to continue to, continue our efforts there. We've seen some improvement, but there's still more work to be done, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, seen no other comments on non-agenda items. We're going to proceed with a public hearing, item eighteen.
Okay, I'm going to be recused on this one for real property interest.
Thank you. We've got a couple of emails, I think we need a staff report on this. Please.
Good evening, Mayor Muldoon, members of the council. My name is Jaime Moriel, Principal Planner of the City's Community Development Department. The item for you tonight is zoning code and local coastal program amendments related to cottage preservation. This item was reviewed by the City Council back in 2020, and it came from the city's efforts to address mansionization and mass and the demolition of cottages and replacement with newer, larger three-story residences. One of the, the issues that were identified by staff and property owners seeking to maintain their cottages, but they ran into issues with our zoning code and particularly the non-conforming regulations pertaining to parking, which limits non-conforming structures to maximum addition of 10%. And so we developed this incentive to allow additions up to 50% or 750 square feet maximum addition. This is a completely voluntary program that would allow the alternative to preserve these beach cottages instead of actually tearing down and redeveloping, but a property would still have the opportunity to demolish their cottage and redevelop consistent with current zoning and development standards. The intent is to allow for modest addition to existing cottages, and so this exhibit illustrates what the incentive would allow for. So in this example, this is your typical one-story cottage in Corona del Mar, and would allow for a modest addition in the rear of the property, a typical second-story addition, that would still maintain the cottage appearance as viewed from the street. That's outlined there. But in exchange for this incentive, the property would have to agree to a deed restriction that would maintain the building envelope that's representative of your typical cottage. And so what we've determined is that would be a one-story structure, no more than 16 feet in height in the front half of the lot, and then in the rear half of the lot, they can go up to two stories, up to 24 feet max, with no third-floor area or no third-floor decks. And so this is what was approved by the City Council in 2020. However, properties in the coastal zone did require an amendment to the local coastal program. The California Coastal Commission did review the proposed ordinance back in November of 2021. Overall, they were supportive of the ordinance, however, they did recommend a number of changes. One of those changes is that the, to qualify for this incentive, the unit size of the original unit shall be no larger than 1,500 square feet, which would, is commensurate with your typical cottage. They also wanted to clarify that this incentive would not, or would not prevail over any coastal resource protection policies. So if there's a non-conforming structure, let's say in a canyon setback area, those more restrictive coastal resource policies would still prevail. And I think the biggest change is that initially, when we adopted this ordinance, we adopted it. And I think the biggest change is that initially when we adopted this ordinance, we did add a requirement that in order to take advantage of the incentive, the property owner would have to agree to not conduct any short-term lodging. And the idea is we didn't want to provide an incentive for short-term lodging operators to increase the size of a unit and increase the occupancy, particularly where these properties are already non-conforming due to parking. The Coastal Commission was concerned, given that they recently adopted the city's short-term lodging regulations in our local coastal program, but in understanding of our concerns, they allowed us to restrict a maximum of six occupants. So if a short-term lodging operator wanted to expand to allow more than six occupants, then they would not be allowed to take advantage of this incentive.
I have a question for you. I'm going to call this new provision the mullet. It's conservative fronts and a party in the back. Regarding the party in the back, if they do a short-term lodging and the new addition, does that still fall under the cap of number of short-term lodging permits we allow?
That's correct. So under the current cap of 1,550 permits, if there's no new permits allowed, they wouldn't be eligible anyhow. If they have an existing permit, they would have to abide by the maximum of six occupants. Otherwise, they would have to either withdraw their short-term lodging or not take advantage of this incentive.
So they basically said, it's their interpretation that prohibiting short-term lodging was a violation of those property rights, and we're going to have a balanced approach with the cap on permits throughout the city with these amendments?
That's correct. And this would apply only within the coastal zone. So outside the coastal zone, we can still maintain the prohibition on short-term lodging.
Thank you.
And that wraps up my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
I just have one more question for you. And the deed restriction, does it run with the land or does it? It does. So they're encumbering their property?
It would run with the land. However, should they choose to redevelop, the city would rescind the deed restriction.
They're starting from scratch, do a rebuild.
Right. So the intent is if they want to take advantage of this incentive and allow for this additional addition, they have to agree to maintain this building form. But if they want to completely demolish and build a three-story home, they can choose to do so as well, and we would remove the deed restriction.
Thank you. Councilman Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, that's what I was just going to ask. So it doesn't require, we're not requiring that the cottage remain a cottage if somebody wants to come in and demolish the current structure. Also, back to the short-term rental, if there are two units, is this a duplex or a single-family residence?
Properties eligible would be a single-family, a duplex, or a triplex.
Okay, so if there's already a permit on the one part of the home, the current part, then there's an expansion, would that be a second permit? Or is that the same permit?
Correct. They would need a second permit for the additional unit, for the separate unit.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments from the dais? Okay, seeing none, we'll go out to the public here, comments on this item. Please come forward.
Good evening. It's just my night. Hi, my name is Laura Curran. I live in Corona Del Mar, and Ron Yo has actually come and visited and told me I have a cottage. It's always fun when Ron Yo stops in front of your house. So it's always good to consider ways to make it possible for people to improve their homes, so I appreciate that. I have a couple of questions. First of all, on the short-term lodging, I think there should be one policy for short-term lodging, and we should let our universal regulation govern the number of short-term lodging permits. Perhaps we have a six-person cap, but it's not clear to me why someone at the oceanfront could have a cottage improvement and then have short-term lodging, and a person who's not in the coastal zone would be restricted. But some other, you know, there are always unintended consequences when we put regulations in place, so that's what makes meetings go long oftentimes. One is this calls for no third floors or third-floor decks. Well, I will point out that my house has a basement, as do many houses. So from the street, it appears to be one story, but it's actually two-story. And if I came and asked to build out over the deck, which is 15 by 15, and then add the second story, someone could say, that's a third story. So in addition, you know, it's not just the deck height or the number of stories, it's the height, because we've run into this before, too. People, you know, there has to be a height maximum at some point potentially as well. So that third-story item may come up, and I want to point that out. And one, some of the feedback we've gotten is that, you know, restricting the building at the first-floor level only could encourage some people to say, there's not enough of an envelope if I don't, if I can't build in the front half of my house, and so I'm going to go ahead and destroy my house. So this is Ron's picture of an example, he said, where that happened. But I think we, you have a start on a plan, but we need to be open to the idea as this goes forward, that as people apply, that they have opportunity to propose something that builds out more than 50% of the front of their house, or lets them build a second story in certain cases where it's not feasible to build in the back house. So, you know, it's a good start, but let's keep those things in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, please come forward. Seeing none, what happens if someone wants to build outside the envelope? Is there a variance we can grant to the planning commission and council or?
Right, so they wouldn't be eligible for this incentive. There is a process in our non-conforming chapter if they wish to build more than the 10%. In some cases, they can request a modification permit, which requires going through a public hearing process. So there is different alternatives. However, this would be a simple process if they maintain the envelope.
Right, thank you. Any other comments from the dais? Questions? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and do we have a motion?
A motion to support the amendment to the municipal code on, related to cottage preservation.
And a second. I'd be remiss to say that I think a big proponent of this was Councilman Hurdman, so I want to acknowledge his work in this as well. Do we have a motion and a second? Let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance titles for ordinance 2022-2, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach, adopting revisions to zoning code amendment CA 2019-6, amending Title 20, planning and zoning of the Newport Beach Municipal Code to Cottage Preservations for Consistency with the California Coastal Commission's Modifications, and ordinance 2022-3, accepting California Coastal Commission's suggested modifications and adopting Local Coastal Program Amendment Number 2019-4, to amend Title 21, Local Coastal Program Implementation Plan of the City of Newport Beach Municipal Code Related to Cottage Preservation, with Councilmember Brenner recusing herself, the motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, welcome back. Okay, moving on to current business, item number 20. This is approval for proposed residential solid waste collection and recycling contract with CRNR for residential solid waste collection. Do we want a staff report from this? Councilman Moriel? Yes, we would.
Good morning, Mayor and council, members of the public. My name is Michael Martin. I'm the Deputy Director of Public Works. And also with me here tonight is our CRNR team, including one of the owners, Mr. David Rodenberg is here, and they'll be available to answer any questions as well. So with that, I'd like to get into our presentation. This item before you is the amendment to our residential refuse collection contract. Some of the background on this. We have some state legislation that's come through in the most recent years here to, it's kind of driving the need to implement some of the changes to this contract and create this amendment. Most notably is SB 1383, which just came into effect as of January 1st of this year. So with all these state mandates and everything that's been coming forward, we've already been doing a lot of work behind the scenes and making a lot of revisions and changes to some of our current programs to make way for this mandate and to make way for this residential contract. And one of those is we've updated some of our other municipal contracts, including our beaches, our facilities, and our street waste cans collection. We've also updated a number of our municipal codes to reflect the legislation requirements. We also developed and implemented new commercial franchise hauler agreements reflecting new legislation requirements. We've been conducting business and school outreach and education, and that's going to be an ongoing thing we'll continue to do. We've also reviewed and updated our city recycle service fee to help give the way for the cost of this contract. And also, we revised and updated our city's Washington Street joint-use bins. So kind of some of the last items that we need to do to round out our efforts in meeting state mandate is, most importantly, this residential contract. And then also, we'll continue ongoing monitoring, education, and adjusting as needed. So with these changes in legislation, these are some of the things that the city has to do now as of 2020, or I'm sorry, 2022. We have to implement higher-level diversion programs to comply with AB 939 and 1383. Our residents must now source-separate their dry recyclables into the blue-top carts to maintain an overall minimum 50% of recycling diversion. And also, our residents must now source-separate their green waste and their food waste into a third green cart to comply with state mandates included in SB 1383. So some of the other circumstances we've identified with the current contract and, you know, looking at making this amendment has created an opportunity for us to make other improvements as well, not just meeting state mandates, but approve in our overall service. We have a split residential commercial franchise system. So with that, we also have collection in space-constrained areas. We have organic material that's no longer allowed as alternative daily cover, meaning it's not allowed to go to landfill anymore. The operation of the dirty merf processing is being phased out and will no longer be available for residential use. We have unlimited refuse services available to our residents. We have more state regulatory emphasis on curbsides source separation and higher diversion percentages being required by these state mandates. So with that, it requires the implementation of a residential organic program, which is a three-card system.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Yes, why not?
Sure. As you go through this, if you go back one slide, the merfs, the clean and dirty, could you kind of just, for the benefit of the public, just kind of explain some of these technical terms?
Sure.
If you would be so kind? Thank you.
Absolutely. So a dirty merf is where, look at your current system now, you have a black cart and a blue cart. The black cart currently goes to the dirty merf, and that's a system that tries to process out any recoverable material that's in there, whether it's green waste, organics, or any recyclables that may have not been diverted through the other cart. So they try to capture that material and divert it away from the landfill. That process has just not been proven to be successful enough to achieve the diversion that's needed. So that's why the dirty merf system is being phased out and no longer accepted by CalRecycle as an option. The clean merf process is your blue cart, that's all your dry recyclables, your bottles, your cans, your plastic, you know, cardboard, paper, that's collected there, and that goes to a facility that further separates it to the particular type of commodity that it is. So a lot of the work's been done on the front end with it being placed in the blue cart, so that's why it's called a clean merf, because there's no organic material or trash in there. It's all commodities that just need to be sorted. So that's the difference between the clean merf and the dirty merf.
Clarification as we go forward. The diversion rate, so the CalRecycle is, has mandated this entire state of California to, bottom line, reduce the amount of waste that's going into landfills.
That is correct, yeah. So before, we used to allow green waste and, or CalRecycle used to allow green waste and organic waste to go to the landfill. They have stopped allowing that. That's no longer allowed to do now. So you have to find a way to separate that material out of the trash that's going to the landfill, and the only way to do that was either through the merf system or through a source separation program, is what we're talking about here tonight.
And the policy reasons for methane, it's not necessarily for compost?
That's right, it's to reduce greenhouse gases, absolutely. So compost is just a byproduct of the efforts of diverting that material. It's a benefit, but the primary focus is to reduce those greenhouse gases. Okay, so this is just a snapshot of how we currently stand with our two contracts. We have the Newport City contract, which used to be a city-provided service, and we contracted that out back in 2013. That contract was already due to expire, and we did an extension until the end of this month. And then the Newport Coast contract, it's been a longstanding contract that's been in place since 2007. It's due to expire this year as well. And you can see the large blue area there, that's the Newport City contract, and then the green area is Newport Coast. So our goal is to merge those two contracts together so we could be cohesive on our achievement and our state mandates. So with this, you know, we've put together a solid waste council working group, and I give credit to the working group because we've been working on this for about two years now, at least for, at least if not longer. And, you know, that checklist I showed you earlier, those are all the things we were able to accomplish through the council working group, and this has really been kind of the achievement we've worked towards with this. And so knowing that we're going to amend this residential contract, the council working group really kind of focused on these key goals and objectives. One of them was to ensure the city has a necessary contract to provide future residential refuse collection and disposal services. The other was to ensure compliance with current and pending state laws, to merge the two contracts into one, but then also to implement new or approved means and methods, meaning that the current way that we just collect our trash in general is outdated, and certainly there's room for improvement there. And then we wanted to implement, or we wanted to manage and minimize program costs, first and foremost. It's, these programs get very expensive. And then we wanted to, most importantly, minimize our impacts to our residents. So with that, you know, just a little bit more of a closer look at our current system, these are the carts we talked about earlier, the black lead cart and the blue cart. So the black lead going to the dirty merf, and the blue cart going to the clean merf. And just recently, from September to December, we worked on rolling out the remaining blue carts to all residents who didn't have them. We wanted to make sure every resident had a blue cart so we could get a head start on our compliance efforts. So with that, we've been able to achieve 48% diversion, which isn't, still isn't enough. We're not able to meet that compliance of 50% or more. And then looking at the Newport Coast contract, we have the black carts, and in this contract, because it's so old, that black cart goes directly to the landfill. It doesn't even go to the dirty merf. And then the brown cart is the recycling cart, and that goes to a clean merf. And brown carts aren't even part of the program anymore, but they're allowed to be grandfathered in, but that's just an idea of how old the contract is and where there's room for improvement. So knowing that that cart goes directly to the landfill, our diversion here is even lower, we're at only 41%. But with that, we have to take a look at the three-card system. This is really the next step in our efforts to accomplish this. We had the blue recycling cart, which will go to the clean merf. We'd have a green organics cart for your yard trimmings, your food scraps, and that would all be processed in our organics facility. So that's a third waste stream being added to the collection routes. And you have trash going to the landfill, you have recyclers going to the clean merf, and you have organics going to a composting facility. Also, there are some other service issues that we wanted to try to have addressed through this effort, and one of them was defining how much trash should be included within the safety paid collection. There's examples here in some of these pictures where there's a dozen or more cans assigned to one household, and it's been a challenge keeping up with the efforts that come with that. And then here, we have some other examples, you know, we've allowed residents to displace anything and everything outside on the ground to be collected, and you can see in the picture with those black trash bags, it's, there's no way to know what's in those bags, and because of that, it ends up going to the landfill. But there could be some divertible material in there, some recyclables, some valuable stuff that needs to be source-separated, so containerization is an idea. And then also, in the other picture there, you see all that green waste, it's all in those black carts, and there's no way to capture that and divert that out. Here's another little bit of an example of some of the containerization issues we've been faced with. We have commercial and rental trash all mixed in with the residential refuse. Construction remodel trash winds up in there. There's lots of loose trash on the ground that creates not just an efficiency issue, you know, it takes longer to collect all that material because the drivers having to get out of the truck and put it in, but it's also a safety and environmental concern. There's vector issues and water quality issues, and this trash could blow around and wind up in the storm drains, so we really wanted to try to clean up our program in that aspect as well. So one of the proposed modifications with this contract amendment was to expand us, of course, to the three-card system. We wanted to increase automation, require that all that material be placed in the carts for pickup, so no more material on the ground or outside the carts. And that just creates a lot of efficiency with its collection. And then we wanted to look at the free consolidated bulky item pickup service, and, you know, looking at how it is now and in comparison with what other cities provide, we decided that five was a good number, and that's more than any other city in Newport Beach. Most cities are at three, so we've offered five and up to five items at each collection, and that's every year.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Michael, on the bulky item pickup service, all this new program takes effect now?
Yeah, if the contract's approved tonight, it'll be effective January 15th.
January 15th. I'm noticing maybe people are becoming aware that just in kind of I'm noticing maybe people are becoming aware that just in kind of in my neighborhood, I'm seeing more people put out real bulky items. So we'll talk as you get into this about communications, but I think that message is starting to get across that people know they need to, beyond just Christmas trees. I'm seeing more furniture on streets. So I guess what would you say the message is to people now? If you have bulky items, this is the week to put them out there.
Get it while you can.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, you know, moving forward, the, we'll be doing a lot of outreach and education to remind residents of how the process will work moving forward. And that those items can still be collected, but it's important to make arrangements in advance to do that. It won't just be picked up automatically anymore. They have to make arrangements with a special truck to come take care of that. And that'll be effective January 15th.
Point to clarify. So after January, if this is approved this evening, then no more collection of bulky items unless the resident calls CRNR, does the program that you'll explain, about picking up, a special order to pick up the bulky items.
Yeah, and, and to clarify, I mean, we're gonna, there's gonna be a grace period here. There's a learning curve for everyone. So if it doesn't get picked up, we'll, we'll still make arrangements to get it collected. It's gonna take some time, time for people to learn the new program. And, you know, we're expecting by April, hopefully, to have everything in place the way it needs to be. But we're hoping by January 15th is when we can really start that effort. But with the way the routes are set up, they may not have that item picked up on collection day just because of the new system. So we'll be continuing to educate people on that, on how it's going to be collected and how we'll handle that moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And then also, this last item here, significant construction, construction remodel projects that'll no longer fit into the residential carts. It's, it's going to be forced to be diverted away to a, a dumpster or bulky items or a, a commercial type system to collect that type of trash as opposed to it being mixed in with the residential. And then looking at this, you know, the three cart system, we wanted to make sure we have plenty of options available. We understand that our city is unique with a lot of the space constraints we have and the alleys on the peninsula and on the island, and then we've got larger neighborhoods in other parts of the city. So we wanted to try to accommodate everyone's needs the best we could. So we made sure we built into the contract different cart size options. And you can see here on the left, there's a 32 gallon cart, and that's probably ideal for a space constrained area. But then on the right, it goes all the way up to 96 gallons, and that's probably more ideal for a larger property, larger, you know, household. But it's up to the resident to decide what works best for them, and we'll work with them on that. And our sustainability team that's going to be coming on board will be able to work with the resident on helping them identify what's best for their needs. But we wanted to make sure those options were available and we weren't limiting people on, on how to process their trash moving forward. But with that, you know, we, looking at, this is just an example. Just to drill down a little more on the different type of cart options that, that could be looked at. You could go with the standard 64 gallon, that's kind of the default size. Or you could go to two, up to two 32 gallons or a 96 gallon on the black landfill trash. Or the blue carts, we, we've increased options there even more. We're trying to encourage people to recycle more. We know that that's the largest amount of material that's typically being generated. So increased a lot of options there. And even with the green waste carts, 32 gallon or all the way up to 96 gallon. In addition to that, we'll be providing a kitchen pail, which is, and it's optional, it's not required, but it's a tool that helps residents work at source separation at the source, in the kitchen where you're generating that food waste. And it's just kind of an option of being able to put that material in there and then take that out to your car and empty it into that before trash day or, or as it gets full. Again, it's not required, but it's a tool we wanted to make available, and that's available to everyone. And again, talking about defining the amount of free carts that we want to provide to our residents. We, we did a waste characterization study over a series of months. And we kind of really kind of assessed and took a look at the amount of trash that's produced on average here in the city of Newport Beach. And that left pie chart there is, it shows 141 gallons of trash per week on average per resident here in Newport Beach. More than half of that was going to the landfill and the other portion there what was, is a, was captured as recyclable. But with the new three cart system, we want to still provide or show that the, the volume of trash doesn't change. It's just being sorted differently. So it's still 141 gallons, but it's being sorted differently because you have that third cart now to put it in, and now everyone has a blue card. So those numbers will continue to change over time as people get used to the program and get better at recycling. But this kind of just shows what our waste looks like and how much trash is being generated. So looking at that, we identified in the contract that it would be best to provide up to 384 gallons per week of service at no charge to the resident. So that's well over double what's average for our community. So, and that's just to make sure that, you know, there's been a long practice of people could just throw away unlimited trash. And it's important to get control of that and really identify what's the appropriate amount. And this is what we were able to do through our study. So again, to recap, each household at no cost will be allowed to have up to 96 gallons of trash, 192 gallons of recyclables, and up to 96 gallons of green waste. And that's over, that's 384 gallons, or if you could look at it differently, 77 5 gallon buckets or 50 cubic feet of waste at no cost to the household. And as a caveat to that, we do have a recycling fee that's charged to the residents, but that's to offset the expense of processing the material once it leaves our city. But this three cart system is at no cost, no cost to the resident. And then households can have more carts if they want. If they decide that they need more carts or want to have more carts available to them, they are certainly available. But there will be a small charge of up to $6.09 per month for that cart. And that's the highest cost, you know, depending on the type of cart or the size of cart, it could be cheaper, but $6.09 would, would be the most they would pay for an extra cart. And then standard and premium value service is still going to continue to be included in this contract. It's included now. It's going to be included in this, and that's available at a small fee, just like it is now. We also provide that for disabled residents too, for no charge.
Another question. Micah, on the $6.09 per month for additional carts, the photograph you showed of some residence households have a dozen or more, is that how we're going to control this through the cost, or is there going to be another limit on the number of carts?
Well, the, the cost is one, one component of that. We want to make sure that, you know, they, they are able to maximize what's available to them at no cost. And if they decide they need additional carts, the goal is to not just arbitrarily charge them for all the extra carts they need. We want to work with them through our sustainability team to talk about what, what's being done at their home to generate that amount of trash, and is there more they could be doing to better source separate, better containerize their materials so they don't need so many carts? So that, you know, that's an effort that's going to be made on a case by case basis for everyone. But nonetheless, we want to make sure that if indeed they need, need those extra carts or want those extra carts, we do have a way of providing them.
Micah, isn't the assumption that if someone has that many carts, more than every other residential place in our city, they probably have a business or something there? So rather than separating them according to business and residential, we are hoping that this is the way to equalize that?
Yeah, you're absolutely right, Councilmember Brenner. It's, um, those large number of carts are more indicative for, you know, short term rental properties, people who may be running a business out of their home. Some of them may be a live-in facility where they, you know, take care of folks. So there's probably some abnormalities to that than just the standard residential household. So that's, that's another way to do that. And if, if we get to a point where we find that this property is just operating as a business, then maybe commercial service is more ideal for them than a residential service. But that's something that we'll continue to evaluate and work with each homeowner on their needs. Some of the additional collection processing modifications we'll be doing, we're going to have new collection trucks to service our organics routes, because that's a new waste stream. CRNR will be increasing their fleet to accommodate that. So we'll have a lot of new trucks in our, in our service area. We also developed this new split body collection truck for collection in space constrained areas like the peninsula or Babo Island. We realized that there's an issue in those areas with traffic and a lot of trucks and with the commercial franchise system and everything else. We wanted to find a way to help minimize and reduce the impact to the public. So this truck has been developed. It's a split body truck. And on one side, you could collect mainstream waste, and on the other side, you could collect organic waste. And they could collect both those waste streams in one pass, as opposed to just bringing a third truck in behind the other one. So we felt that was best because it's a rear, rear loader truck. It's best used in the space constrained areas. So we've added that into this contract, and we'll be getting four of those to service those areas. And in addition to that, we're going to require all trucks to have a seven year average collection vehicle age with no trucks over 10 years old. So that helps us maintain our fleet ongoing where they're always in a like new and well operated, well maintained condition. We also wanted to make sure our organic material is being processed at the least expensive means allowed. So whether it's composting or digestion, we want to make sure it's the least expensive means. And then we wanted to also implement some residential collection day changes. So with these new routes, adding a third waste stream organics, adding the split body trucks, it, it came to a point where we had to make some changes to our routes. So here's just a quick example of that. You could see from this map, there's some areas in the city over in East Bluff and Newport Coast where it's very fragmented. And that's just from how old some of these contracts are, the fact that we have two different contracts operating at the same time. There was really a need to take a closer look at this and try to clean this up so it's not so fragmented. Because we have some neighborhoods who are seeing residential collection trucks almost every day in their neighborhood, and that's just not efficient, and that's pretty impactful to the community. So we want to try to clean that up and simplify it. And the council working group wanted to really make sure we, you know, take a close look at each neighborhood and how it's impacted. But here's kind of a better picture of what it, what we're proposing. So going from this to something more like this, where everything is kind of consolidated more uniformly, where you have one track, one truck in that whole area on that day collecting those routes. And I've added these slides in here, and we don't have to go through all of them in detail, but just, just an example of what some of the changes kind of look like. This is an area where it's going to go from Wednesday to Thursday. And another area that goes from Friday to Thursday. So there'll be a lot of changes like this, and I've included these maps in here mostly for the public to refer to so they can refer to this presentation. So we don't have to go all these, through all these in detail, but what they're here for reference. And then we'll also add information on our website about how to find out when their collection day is. But in summary, just to summarize why these route changes are needed, it's, it's not just for efficiency, but it's also intended to provide collection service to residents at a more efficient and less disruptive manner. We want to provide for the expanded recycling program, that three cart system. We want to balance out the loads to ensure all routes can be collected on time. Some, as it stands right now, some routes go well very late into the day, and some are done really early. You know, Mondays are really heavy and Fridays are really light, so we wanted to balance that out so we have consistency throughout the week on those collection days. We wanted to increase safety by reducing the number of, of miles that are traveled by collection trucks and then reducing the total number of daily truck routes. Want to further avoid high traffic areas, congested areas. We want to reduce noise, traffic, and truck emissions anywhere that we can. So many residents will have their collection days adjusted as a result of this. And that'll also lead into changes to street sweeping schedules. And we have an item here tonight that, that Mark with our utilities department is here to present. This is, is the genesis for needing to change a lot of our street sweeping routes, because we like to have street sweeping follow the, the trash collection schedule. So I just added this here. There's a link here that the residents could be able to copy and paste into their website, and as we move forward, it will clean this up. It'll be a much more user friendly link, but you'll be able to go to the city's website and go to this search feature and just type in your address, and it'll tell you what day is your collection day. So we'll be sending out notices and everything else too, but we're trying to give as many options as possible for the residents to be able to keep track of that. So in addition to the letter that you receive, the notifications will be received, and you also have this feature too. But one thing to, to look at, and it's of course a, an item, you know, of interest is the contract cost. So our current contract cost is about $4.9 million annually. And that direct cost is paid for by the city's general fund. Residents are not directly charged for this residential refuse. The city recycle fee was currently, at the time, was generating about $970,000 in revenue because the fee was only $3 per household. And in 2021, city cost for residential refuse collection and disposal was $3.9 million. But under the new proposed contract, we're looking at an eight year contract term, which you won your extensions. The proposed contract cost is approximately $7.8 million annually, so that's almost double. And then the 10 year cost, if we were to go to full term, we'd be looking at $9.3 million, including all the CPI adjustments that come with that. The direct cost is still paid for out of the city's general fund. And with the recent recycle fee update that we did, it's going to generate up to $2.3 million in revenue, $6.28 for a household on average, and that's going to help offset this contract cost by $1.5 million annually.
Yes.
Micah, if you just want to go through those numbers again so everybody understands, just to be clear, on the, this whole new waste collection system is, there's no additional cost to the city residents to pay for this. The only thing that has changed is an updating of the recycle fee that they've been currently paying. When was the last time that fee was adjusted?
January of last year.
No, I mean, before that?
Well, before that, I believe it was 2009.
2009. And so it, there's, we've gotten some letters. There may have been confusion that, that because the city charter and municipal code prohibits the city residents from paying for, the, the city must pay for the refuse collection, except for recycling, which was provided for by a charter amendment many years ago. So that, prior to last year's increase, it was $3. Now it's $6.08 or whatever, 28 cents. So just to be clear, and you could say these words better than I'm saying, is that there's, the general fund will be paying for this new organic waste management system. And as we see here, the additional costs for, to the city is seven point, the proposed contract cost, 7.8 compared to 3.9. So it's doubling the cost of our waste collection. Is that correct?
That's right. Actually, the current contract cost is 4.9, so.
And well, it's offset by the recycle fee.
Offset by the recycle. But, but yeah, you're right. Diane, it's, it's $7.8 million of the contract cost, and that comes directly out of the city's general fund. And we have that recycling fee that helps kind of offset that expense, but the contract cost itself is, is paid for by the general fund.
And it will continue to be paid.
And will continue to be.
Yeah, so there's no proposal to increase the cost, so people understand that?
No. No, the city's expense has gone up, but that cost is not passed on to the resident, correct?
Thank you.
Councilmember Avery.
To make it clear, the, the $6.28 per household, is that monthly, annually?
That, that's a monthly fee.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, and just for comparison sake of other cities in the area and what their contract costs are and and how much their residents are paying for this, this type of program. These cities here have all moved into a 1383 compliant program. On average, they're paying, you know, anywhere between $18 and $23 per household, and the resident pays that. The city doesn't pay that. So those residents are paying that much for their trash service. On average throughout the county, it's $22.55. But here in the city of Newport Beach, the only thing the residents have to pay is a recycling fee, $6.28 for the city area and $5.76 for the Newport Coast area. So the, the city's cost is $24.08 per household. That's our cost. That's not the resident's cost, but that's the cost we're paying. So you see in comparison, it's fairly consistent with what other cities' contracts are. Ours is a little higher because, you know, the program that we're implementing. And we provide a higher level of service than those other cities do. Our five bulky item pickups is above and beyond what's average. The, the free doorstop pickup of e-waste, household hazardous waste, all that stuff is all included. Our Sharps program, that's all included in the contract, and that's a doorstop service. No other city in the county provides that. So our, our cost may be a little bit higher, but the level of service we're providing is exceptionally higher. So we're getting good value for that.
CRNR is going to provide direct customer service and contact for residents who have a complaint or a request, service request?
Yeah, that, that's going to be a significant improvement to this contract. Built into this contract rate is a, is a robust customer service system that CRNR is going to be operating. They could probably speak a little bit better to that than I can, but the level of communication, you know, a direct phone line to them where they get a live person and a dial out system where CRNR could call to the resident and let them know about route changes or inform them about, you know, service delays or anything else. The outreach and education that they'll be providing through mailers and on their website is significantly more than what we've been used to. So that's part of this contract cost, but we're getting a lot for that. Again, that's some of the added value and improved customer service and quality. And even in our contract, you know, the current one now, we don't have a lot of assurances to make sure that there's performances being met. But in this new contract, we built performance standards into the contract where we're requiring CRNR to, to meet those performance standards. CRNR to meet those performance standards and there's liquidated damages if they don't. And we didn't have that before. So that's something new to this contract too that's really important and it's helpful for us in making sure that we're getting good quality service delivered to our public. So just to talk a little bit about the contract.
Can I just ask one more question?
Oh, yes.
I didn't see it in the slide. When you're talking about the enhanced service, you talk about the warning system on each truck in terms of?
Oh, yes. So with that fleet that we talked about, this contract now requires the same level of protections that the commercial franchise offers with collision avoidance systems, making sure that there's monitoring on the vehicle to alert the driver to anything within its proximity, whether it's a vehicle, a pedestrian, anything like that. That's all required to be on all their trucks and there's annual reporting they have to do to ensure to us that that's operational and functioning the way that it needs to. But the quality of the trucks improves significantly more too. All the new trucks that will be gained, that split body truck, that's a state-of-the-art design. There's no other city in Orange County that has that. And so it's really an advanced system. So we're getting a lot of quality in that regard as well. So if this contract is approved tonight, this is just kind of a basic timeline of how things will go moving forward. We'll have the approval of the contract tonight. The contract will become effective January 15th. The beginning of the route changes and collection schedules will begin January 31st. And then with that, we'll be able to start deploying our organics waste carts. And that'll be done in phases between February and March. And then if there's any extra service charges that need to become effective, those won't be effective until April. So if we need to charge people for extra carts, charge them for non-containerization issues, extra bulky item pickups, April's really when that's going to take effect. So we've built in a little bit of a grace period here to allow our residents time to adjust to the new system and right-size the program for them. And then just to elaborate a little further on a continued outreach and education efforts, as a city, we've taken an approach to, in addition to what CRNR is doing, as we've done a lot of digital outreach. We've been posting twice a week on Instagram and Facebook and Twitter. We've had over 4,000 impressions over the last few weeks. Even on Nextdoor, we've had over 4,000. We've updated our webpage. We've had over 1,000 unique visits to that with our frequently asked questions section. We have segments on MBTV and social media PSAs. We also have the city manager weekend review where we've been covering this topic very extensively. We also have the direct mailers that have gone out. We've had two standalone citywide mailers, two utility bill inserts and two Newport Navigator featured articles. And that stuff, that's already happened. We've also done a lot of community outreach. You've seen here in the council chambers and in other areas, we have cart displays and information at city libraries and community centers, showing people the different cart size options and what the new carts look like and what goes into new carts. And we've had, CRNR has set up booths at community and holiday events. We've had a Speak Up Newport keynote feature. We've done town hall meetings. We've done council announcements and we've done our city public works and CRNR has been answering questions and concerns from the public on a daily basis. So moving forward, there'll be an even bigger effort to do a lot of this outreach and education. And the city in combined effort with CRNR will be providing frequent social media outreach, more direct mail recycling guides, additional utility bill inserts. We'll be doing direct calls to residents about service changes. We'll be having interactive map with Find My Collection Day feature like we talked about earlier. We'll have the Spring Newport Navigator article, the Weekend Review articles will continue. We'll have a how-to organics training video for the public to learn how to use their organics carts. We'll have digital advertising and even HOA newsletters and eat blasts. And this slide is really intended for the public and it's just kind of a reminder to get everybody in the process here and lots of phone numbers for them to be able to know who to contact and notify. But we want everyone to sort their recyclables and break down their boxes, put them in the right carts, remind them that there's no material left on the ground. If they need more carts, they could call this number here. This 949 number is a direct call to CRNR and they'll know that that's a Newport resident calling them. And then there's the 866 number as well. They could use this for bulky item pickups. And then we just remind them about, until the green carts get there, continue to put your organic waste in the black cart until the green cart arrives. And then of course, if you have any other questions, you could call our Public Works Department or visit our website. With that, I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Micah. Councilman Brenner.
Yes, I have a few questions here, Micah. Did I, did anyone, I don't believe I did, I normally do forward comments from, that we get in emails to the staff person. Did you see Jim Mosher's comments about the refuse program? Have you seen those yet?
Yes.
Okay. All right, good. Because I might have a couple of questions about that. Okay. So my first is if you want more carts or a change in the configuration, like say you want two of the small ones and no big ones or something like that, do you just call CRNR about that to tell them the different sizes and numbers that you want?
Yeah, and that's already started happening. So we've had residents calling, we've been connecting with CRNR and they've been putting it in their system, what the resident's preference is for cart sizes and number of carts. So they've been making accommodations for that now as they can, as we work towards getting the green carts out to them. So it's either the right-sized cart or the right number of carts, right? But we've already started working on that.
Okay. And when will the food waste carts be distributed?
So between February and March is when that phased process will begin. So but as early as the beginning of February, they'll start rolling out the green carts.
All right. And one of your pictures had new trucks and they were white. Are our trucks going to be white?
No, so that truck is still brand new. So that's a point I should have made. That truck's brand new, it hasn't been painted yet, but it'll be painted the standard CRNR colors and everything. But because it's so new, it's white right now.
Yeah, I was thinking that white looks pretty now, but I don't want to see it in six months.
It'll go to the blue and red that you could see now.
Okay, good. And the change of dates for trash will require some change of street sweeping days. So have we been adequately conveying that to people? Do you think that that change is going to happen? You know how people hate change.
Yeah. So we've been working on some outreach and education R and N. And I know that Mark's here and he could probably speak to a little bit more on the street sweeping side of things. But between now and January 31st, there'll be a lot of effort going to the resident and CRNR will be contacting the resident via phone to let them know that these changes are coming. And that'll be something we'll add to the messages. Not only will your route change, be changed, but your street sweeping schedule will be impacted as well, so that they're aware of both changes, not just the refuse collection.
Right. And I'm with Diane, I would really like to make sure everybody understands the collision avoidance system that we've built into this contract because that's a really important consideration for Newport Beach. So I'd like to make sure that we highlight that and bold it and make it so that people really see what they're getting in this new contract.
Yeah, that's something we could work with CRNR on, is probably providing a piece that really goes into detail about how that system performs and what it does. Sure.
Okay. And the only other thing is, you've told me what our policy is on Christmas tree pickup. I'm getting a lot of calls from a lot of people telling me that's not what's happening. So can you enlighten everyone that's watching in our television audience?
Yeah, I'll speak to it the best that I can and it might be appropriate for someone from CRNR to come up and talk more about their operation. But what we try to accomplish is that the Christmas tree gets placed out on the curb or in the alley on collection day and it gets picked up as part of the collection. Now, there's some intricacies to that. If it's just a green tree, it gets processed as green waste so they could collect that. But if it's a flocks tree, it's got the fake snow on it, or if it's all wrapped up in a bag or has a metal stand on it, then that truck, then a different truck has to come. And sometimes that truck has to be dispatched and they don't always make it there. And then it sits there till the next collection day and then we kind of end up getting a backlog. And I know they've been impacted by some COVID issues and things like that, but maybe they could probably speak more in detail there. But I know that's some of the challenges we've been facing over these past few weeks.
My residents are really concerned about the fire danger of all these trees. And there's about eight in the block that my one house is in and about eight in the block that my other house is in. So that's just in two blocks. I've got about 16 trees in the village that are, so I know that's multiplied by the number of blocks we have there.
Yeah, and that's the current issue now. We've been strategizing for next year. We've already got a better plan for next year, how that's going to work. We're going to utilize the transfer station at the yard and they'll bring all the trees to the yard and sort them out there instead of trying to deal with it in the field. So that way, everything gets picked up off the street, out of the alley. We'll bring it to the yard and sort it there. So next time around, it should be much more improved.
Good. That's something we can tell people then.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Quick question on, well, items to remember and start doing. There's some important telephone numbers here, not to get so much in the weeds. I see Tara over there. How are we going to be really putting this information on our website, which I know you will be, but making it really visible that people don't have to hunt around and search for what trash pickup or whatever the key word is? How do we make it easy for people if they've thrown out by mistake their brochure, that they access some of this critical information?
So currently, we have a splash page on our websites. When you go to the homepage, some of those splash pages that pop up, one's about the expanded recycling program. So if you click on that, it takes you to our refuse page, which has these phone numbers on there. And it's, and there's also going to be links to CRNR's website so they could link to CRNR from our page, the phone numbers on there. But then CRNR is going to have a lot of outreach and education material that's going to be going out to the resident, even through their own channels. But in addition to our social media blast that we do, we'll include those phone numbers and that information as well.
Well, even beyond the introductory period, I think these are numbers that people need to know. Okay, thanks. Good job. Thank you, actually. I just want to commend you. It's been a long process. Well done.
Councilman O'Neil.
Yeah, just to say real quickly, this is definitely a council committee that I'm looking forward to retiring. We've been, yeah, we've been at it for quite some time, dealing with the commercial waste first and then working through the residential requirements. And it's nice to be here finally. So this is driven in large part by state mandates, as we've been seeing. It's going to end up costing the city a significant amount of money into the general fund that we'll be budgeting obviously and had budgeted into this current budget, but it will be an ongoing expense that will be fairly significant. And there are probably not a ton of residents watching right now to recognize the change on the routes, but they'll figure it out pretty quickly on February 1st. So hopefully, we are ready for a lot of calls asking why it wasn't picked up on a certain date. I know we'll be doing a lot of mail, but we'll try to figure out how to do that. But to our consultants, just want to say thank you. They really did a great job working through, working us through to staff and actually in particular, Micah, thank you. This has been a long, long haul. And so I really appreciate all the effort that you've done. This is just a small microcosm of it. And so there's a lot of work to be done going forward, but getting here has been particularly challenging with the law and I think it's like 127 pages of regulations to try to figure out how to apply this into a city as diverse as Newport Beach is, where you have fairly large areas and then very site constrained areas. And so there's, like I said, a lot of work to be done, but getting here, we're here. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilman O'Neil, who was on the work group with you?
Council members Dixon and Brenner.
Good. Thank you so much for your hard work on this. If we go back a couple of slides more, then I think we'll be ready to go out to the public. Keep going. Couple back, I think it was one where it says, you know, this is the fee for recycling. This is the fee. A couple more back.
Oh.
Yeah.
Whoops, sorry. There we go.
Let's see. No, still back further.
So back before the?
Yeah, back before this, which is helpful, but.
No problem.
So so that, so people in the audience at home know, so right now, the five items, we probably did forward one, I'm sorry, you passed it. That was great.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Tell me when the.
Perfect. I think this is it. No, actually, no, it's not. I think I can wing it. If they were to get a certain, that really helps to see it actually. Let me.
Is it this one?
Yes, this is the one. Thank you so much. Yeah.
Got it.
So if you have extra cart, that's when you're being charged more. Otherwise, you're not being charged more, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And if you were to get more than five pickups, which five is a lot in my opinion, that's when you're getting charged more. Otherwise, you still get five bulk item pickups.
Correct.
And in your ideal world, just explain to us, you know, because we're from the generation where you just put, you know, food down the disposal, we've talked about this before. The resident would now, rather than putting food down the disposal, would put, could you just say ideally how that process would go?
Yeah, so like I mentioned, there's that kitchen pail. So, you know, you want to start collecting the material where it's being generated. So food scraps are generated in the kitchen, whether it's from preparing your food or leftover food, or you're cleaning out your fridge and there's things that are expired. You would just empty those into that pail, take it out to your organics cart, put it in there, and then on collection day, you could roll it out to the curb.
So you can't put it in a bag?
Well, you can put it in a bag if it's an organics recyclable bag. It's one of those green bags. And that's the information we'll provide on our outreach and education too. But there is what's called a compostable bag and it's green and it can be lined in that cart and that could help with keeping your, or your kitchen pail could help with keeping it clean, or if you're concerned about odor or anything like that, those could actually be placed in the green waste cart.
Where do they get those bags?
So those are available online at Amazon. They're available a lot in grocery stores. I know Trader Joe's has them. Amazon has a very large variety of those. You just look for certified compostable is the thing you need.
The traditional paper bag we covered our books in in high school is not going to do it?
That'll do it too. Yeah, you could use paper bags, you can land it with newspaper, you could use a compostable bag. I've seen people put the stuff in the freezer and then take it out and throw it in the shaft so it's not soft and wet and it helps reduce the odor, I guess. But there's a lot of options there. But yeah, you're right, a paper bag could be used to.
But we cannot use the bags like we bring home the leftovers from the restaurant and it's in a plastic bag. We can't put that plastic in there, right?
No. The only type of plastic is the compostable type of plastic. So like a grocery bag or a small trash bag or food bag, those can't go in the green cart. You could line your pail with it and empty your pail, but just don't put the bag in there.
You can still use traditional plastic in the waste container.
Yes, in your black cart, yes.
So, and I'm almost done here. You're going to, Sacramento did this, right? This is Sacramento's request. They don't want, you know, yeah, exactly. It's so different from what we've been doing. And all three receptacles are going to come out to the street side at the exact same time.
Yes.
And we're going to get, now everyone looks to me for trash day. When I mess it up, my whole street messes up. They think, oh, he's on city council, he knows when trash goes out. Do not look to my trash receptacles. I do not know when trash goes out.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if we can have a better URL for trash days than the one that you gave?
We will. That's the only one I have available right now, but we're working on a friendly URL that's much simpler.
Okay, great.
Yeah, and we'll provide that. That was just all I had available at the time. But yeah, and you're correct. On trash day, all trash, whether it's blue, green, black, all trash goes out on trash day and it all gets collected.
And people are going to get a letter, mail to them with a website, but it's going to tell them your neighborhood is now going to be a Wednesday neighborhood.
That's correct. They'll get a letter specifically addressing that topic.
Or whatever day. Okay, great. Councilman Avery, do you have any more? Yes?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank our three colleagues who've worked on this for what, a little more than two years?
Yeah. Yeah.
And Micah, I know you were really, soaked up a lot of your time and effort and the CRNR team have been working with you. It's really something. I want to know what you're going to do when this is done. You have a couple of things lined up, I assume.
This is a big milestone, but after this, the rubber meets the road. The next six months is going to be real, real dynamic, but...
The implementation and then...
Yeah. Yeah, but yeah, I'll be ready to move on to something new as well, so...
Right. Well, thank you so much.
Here, Councilman Brenner, do you have more comments?
I just wanted to piggyback onto a couple of other comments about the consultants that our Public Works staff hired to work with us, because this is something that, this is not, as you were saying, Micah's main focus, and we had the best consultants. They really understood the perspective from a lot of other cities and they were able to answer all of our questions along the way. So between city staff and the consultants, we felt like we got a real education in trash. And I just wanted to know, I asked a question in the last meeting, and I don't know, I saw Mark is here. Did we get the answer to whether you're better off putting your food waste in your garbage disposal or in your food waste disposal?
It's probably better in the organics cart, but if Mark wants to speak, better in the organics cart.
So it's getting used to not putting everything down the garbage disposal. That's going to be hard for us, but we'll do what we're told to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Great presentation. Let's go out to public comment. Any public comments? This item, please come forward. Your only chance to talk trash.
Mayor Muldoon, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher and I have a number of comments. First of all, regarding the bulky items, Micah is correct. The residents in Santa Ana Heights, who are served by the Costa Mesa Sanitary District CRNR contract, can only call for bulky item pickup three times a year, but each time they can ask for 10 items to be picked up. And three times 10 is actually more than five times five, not less. Regarding the cart choices that are available to the residents, up until now, I had thought we had heard that the residents could pick any combination of carts that added up to the correct volume. And Slide 16 that we were showing tonight paints a different picture. There is limited choices that they have. I don't know which is correct. I have not read this entire 525-page contract. I did look at the summary and a couple of the pages. I was surprised on page 2049 to learn that the food scraps and the green waste from Newport Beach is going not to the much touted CRNR digestion facility in Riverside County, but it's being trucked all the way to Yuma, Arizona, to a composting facility. I assume that's cheaper, but I'm not sure that's the best environmental solution. Page 2063, the trucks which use the gas that is produced from that digestion facility in Riverside County, we're asking them to fuel them at our transfer station, but it's also saying they could fuel them at their own. So I don't know if we are requiring them to use our facility or can use their own. And disturbingly to me, the numbers of the cost didn't add up. On page 20-8, we're told that the great bulk of the customers who the city is currently paying $13.63 per household is going up to $24.8. That's a 78% increase, yet we're told the overall cost is just going from $5 million to $7.8 million, which is less than a 60% increase. That does not make sense if we're actually going from 13 to 24. How can the overall cost only be going up by a small amount? And I'm wondering, because I did not read the whole contract, if there's any variable costs in here or if this is truly a fixed cost contract. In Santa Ana Heights and Costa Mesa, the residents there pay the sanitary district a fixed monthly fee on their property tax, but the district pays CRNR a variable fee based on how much tonnage they collect. And I don't know if there's any element like that in this contract or not. And then finally, the thing I most want to speak about, but I'm running out of time, is the city's commitment that it is supposed to have to provide free trash service to the residents of Newport Beach through a, not the charter, but through a citizen enacted ordinance. We have been paying $3 a month to, in lieu of having to separate the recyclables ourselves. Now we're being asked to pay more but have to do the recycling or separation ourselves, which doesn't seem right. And of the 24,000 households, page 20-6 says that 10,000 of them, nearly half, will be having to pay $8 a month extra for what is called valet service. And apparently, they have no choice with the way that their trash is collected as valet service. So those people are going to be paying...
Thank you, Jim.
$14. That is not free trash collection.
Thank you, Jim. Next speaker, please. Okay, any other public comments on this item? Please respect the allotted time, especially to come and speak on almost every item. Okay, back to the council dais. Do we have a motion?
I, I don't really want to, but, but I do appreciate the partnership that we've had with CRNR. I appreciate your being here and look forward to the years of future partnership. And so in response to state mandates, I will, I will make this motion.
I'll second.
Motion and second, let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Thank you. On to item 21, resolution regarding changes in addition to the street sweeping. Think we'll need a staff report on this one as well.
Just a poll.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right. Thank you. Yes, right, we continue, yes. Excellent.
Just so you can...
Yeah. All right.
No, it hasn't been polled. There was just one attachment. The resolution was modified.
Oh, I apologize. I thought it was polled.
Okay. Mark, don't be so excited. Go ahead.
Well, you're the ones that should be excited. I'm considering my piece to be the one piece of a thousand-piece puzzle that was just assembled, so I have the final piece here, so maybe that's exciting or not. But very briefly, as a result of the waste changes that we're making in some of these neighborhoods, we need to adjust the street sweeping to make sure it coincides with, with the different trash days, basically. And a third of the city is posted where we actually, you know, do enforcement and we have an official day where folks have to move their cars and so on. It's really in the kind of the more dense areas. And so we have to make some changes here and we want to show you these. And it has to do with kind of the central peninsula area and a swap with the north end of Corona Del Mar. And we're going to be moving in this central area here from 21st Street all the way up to G Street or so, from Tuesday to Wednesday on one side of the street here for street sweeping. And then the other segment, as we get down to G Street as well, to, again, Tuesday to Wednesday. And then Corona Del Mar, on these alternate street blocks, they're going to be going from Wednesday to Tuesday. And so that's the swap that happens to accommodate the trash and then also to maintain with the five street sweepers that we have running in the city every single day. And as Micah mentioned, we are going to begin the outreach portion of this in conjunction with their, you know, notifications on all of the waste and trash day changes. We're going to be putting out changeable message signs and sending out notices on this and including also a grace period, typically three or four weeks for enforcement, once we start in February, you know, notifying residents about these particular locations with the changes. In your packet is an amended resolution. We've removed, we initially proposed some changes to the city's industrial area. We'd like to pull that back and try some alternative methods first. And then we have one little segment there on Narcissus on the north end of Corona Del Mar that the residents there have asked us to add as enforceable street sweeping area. And those are it. And to answer your question about sewer, it's recommended that you put all of your, any of your food waste, you know, in now what's going to be the organics recycling, because as you put more and more food waste down your disposal, disposal system, you know, it can have a tendency to clog either in your sewer pipes or in ours, and then that could lead to a sewer spill and sewer overflow. So the less food that you put down there, you know, eggshells, vegetables, fruit, meat, all that stuff, it's just for a little ancillary stuff, that's the best practice to reduce that. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Councilman Brenner?
I just wanted to clarify, to make sure that all my people north of the highway in Corona Del Mar understand, so it's all the people that have a Wednesday street sweeping will change to a Tuesday street sweeping.
That's correct.
And Mondays will stay the same.
That's right.
And there are no changes south of the highway.
That's right.
Okay. Everybody pay attention. I know we're going to get a lot of people confused about this.
Yeah, so following up on that question, when does that become effective again, Mark?
This will become effective the first week of February and we're planning for a three or four-week grace period for enforcement.
And what does a grace period look like? We're giving out warning tickets or are we just not even going down the streets?
We would give out warnings. The police department would give out warnings, yeah.
That's right. So no dollar amount, just sorry we missed you, next time it's a fine.
Exactly.
Okay, great. Okay, another comments on the dais. Okay, seeing none, public comments. Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back. Do we have a motion?
We'll make a motion.
Yeah, motion by Mayor Potemblom.
Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, any motions for reconsideration? Madam Clerk, please read the announcement.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Thank you, and I saw a request for that. So we're going to adjourn memory of three individuals. Memory of Callie Earnby, Carol Drew, and Lila Crispin, and we'll do tributes to the two residents. First, Carol, by Councilwoman Brenner.
Okay, our first adjournment tonight is in the memory of Carol Drew, a Newport Beach resident who passed away on December 14th. Carol was very active in our community through the Cliff Haven Community Association and protect Mariners Mile. She could often be seen in the neighborhood, walking with her husband Luke and their standard poodle, Terry. She also could frequently be found here in our council chambers because Luke and she were here frequently. She was quite sophisticated and passionate about life. She will be missed by everyone who had the honor of knowing her. Condolences can be sent to the Drew family at 420 Kings Road, Newport Beach, 92663.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dixon?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm adjourning in memory of Lila Crispin. Our second and final adjournment in memory of Lila Crispin, who passed away on December